We'll reconvene at 9:08 PM and go to Item 2C. Consider all matters related to the preliminary 2011-2012 General Fund and Education Jobs Fund budget. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Members of the Board, as you know, we're still in a little bit of wait-and-see mode with what Austin has in store for us, and they've called a special session. But we did want to kind of give you an update as to where we are right now and what we believe are kind of true at this moment in time. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hyatt, and I think he's going to turn it over to Ms. Halsey to give you the latest numbers. So, Mr. Hyatt?
Yes, sir. Dr. Burns, as Dr. Burns said, the state legislature can't seem to get over this final quarter of their efforts down there. I will tell you that there's -- appears to be no real optimism that there's going to be any additional funding, additional revenues for public education. What the primary argument's about now is just how it's distributed. It appears that the new proposed Senate Bill 1, which is the substitute for Lawrence Shapiro's original bill that died at the end of the first session, is the most probable solution. That's somewhat of a hybrid version, and Ms. Halsey can explain it some more if we need to, but that version distributes the pain in the first year of the biennium somewhat equally between school districts, which is in our benefit to a degree in the first year. So, first year of the biennium may be a little bit better than we had thought at first. But then in the second year of the biennium, they begin implementing a process to reduce funding disparities, which is a slow deterioration of what we talked to you about is the ACITAR, the additional state aid for tax reduction. By reducing that additional state aid, it impacts us disproportionately higher than many other school districts. And so the second year of the biennium will be even more painful than the first. So, we've got a long road ahead of us. We think we've got a good plan, but it's still going to take some work. And Ms. Halsey's going to give you a kind of a summary of what we've already talked about and how that affects us in the current legislation. Bonnie?
Thank you. Well, as Mr. Hyatt said, this is our 1112 General Fund and Education Jobs Fund with what we know so far. As with all budgets, you have to have assumptions behind what you use to develop the budget. And our assumptions for this is that the funding model would be what we currently have, that our attendance will be very similar to what we have in 2010-11. It looks like our tax roll with the preliminary estimates is going to be down to around $13.6 billion. We're currently at $14.1 billion. So, that's about a 3.72 percent reduction. Tax rate at $1.04 for the general fund. There's no compensation increase in this budget, and this will lower our new hire schedule.
Ms. Halsey, and I talked about it, and Dr. Burns too, and thought we just mentioned to you, I think we've talked about it briefly, but just to reinforce, since there doesn't appear to be anywhere nearly adequate funds to provide for a compensation increase for our staff this year, the current proposal on the table is no raise for any staff person this year. Structurally, what that does mean, though, is unless we want teachers with different years of experience earning the exact same amount of money, what we're actually proposing and suggesting is the appropriate thing to do is actually reduce our beginning teacher salary. That way, a teacher that started with us last year right out of college will still be making a little more than a teacher that starts with us this year right out of college. And that's because the beginning teacher salary this year, and right now we're estimating it will be something around $400 less than what we paid a beginning teacher last year. We've never, ever done that before. That's not a good approach. This is a year in Texas education, in Texas legislature, that we're seeing several firsts in school district budgets and Texas state budgets. Not something we're happy about, but we thought you should be painfully aware of some of the other impacts of the funding reductions.
Yeah, and, Ms. Hyatt, if I might add, the board has talked about it before, and they understand about the market and being able to attract teachers and the importance of that new hire. This year, that's not, doesn't have quite the weight that it's had in the past, obviously, because other districts are facing the same situation. So, we don't feel like it would reduce our competitiveness to hire if we need to, but at the same time, it provides the equity and the structure we currently have. So, that's why we're recommending doing it.
Thanks.
If we look at our 1112 budget estimate before state reduction, you'll remember that all of our previous 1112 budget estimates was for a $3 million deficit. This would still be accurate if we had not received the Education Jobs Fund money. With the Education Jobs Fund money, we are estimating a small surplus of $884,162, and that's, of course, before we add any state reduction. So, basically, everything that I've been telling you about 1112 is still holding true. We just received a little additional money with this Education Jobs Fund money. Looking at our fund balance estimates again before state reductions, for the current year of 2010-11, we are currently estimating $72.2 million, which covers about 128 days of operation or 35 percent of our budget. As the board knows, we've talked many times that we like to keep at least 90 days of fund balance for operations. 1112, again, before state reductions, we are currently showing $73.1 million. That's because of that $800,000 surplus that we were showing again before the state hits us. That would give us 132 days or 36 percent of the budget. As has been said many times, Governor Rick Perry has called a special session of the 82nd Legislature that commenced at 8:00 AM on Tuesday, May 31st. The proclamation stated that the purpose of the special session, among other things, was to consider legislation relating to fiscal matters necessary for the implementation of House Bill Number 1, as passed by the 82nd Legislature, the regular session, and measures that will allow school districts to operate more efficiently, among other purposes. So, the state has a deficit. What will our share be? As has been discussed before, in the state's budget, 44 percent of that budget is for public school education. We will have a reduction. The amount is still unknown. Did I mention there's a special session? Looking at third-party estimates, and this may not hold, but we'll give you what we know today, right now, the third-party estimates are that for 1112, we would lose $10.7 million from current funding. In 1213, we would lose an additional $5.9 million for a total loss from our current 2011 funding of $16.5 million. If that were to hold true in 1112, then our fund balance would be $62.4 million, which covers 112 days, which is still above the 90s, so we're in good shape. And that's 30 percent, and again, there's a special session, so anything can happen. Just looking at our fund balance estimates that we like to talk about, in green 2011, again, we're estimating a fund balance of $72.2 million, 35 percent of the budget or 128 days. And if the third-party estimates hold in 1213, we would be down to $62.3 million, 30 percent of the budget or 112 days. In summary, our funding is not known. We will not know until they complete their -- hopefully, it'll be in this special session, but they can call another one. We're hoping that they'll finish it with this one. We will continue to implement the plan that we developed at the February 24th Board Work Study on Resource Allocation, in that we will absorb whatever the state dictates for 1112 while we continue to identify additional reductions. And the district continues to keep this quote in mind, again, that was discussed at our February 24th Resource Allocation Work Study. High-performing districts ensure that the necessary resources, including time, money, personnel, and materials are allocated to accomplish the district's goal. This can mean cutting back on or dropping initiatives that are not aligned with district goals for achievement and instruction. And again, this is our 1112 General Fund and Education Jobs Fund budget as we know it today, June 2nd. Entertain questions at this time.
Mr. Shore?
Ms. Halsey, you showed us a slide where third-party projections--
Yes, sir.
--would be, and that's pure speculation?
Yes, sir.
That--
Hopefully, they're educated guesses based on the bills.
That we may have a decrease of $16.5 million for the two years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My question to you is, if we took that percentage, and I've been trying to figure out how we'd get that percentage, but that's over two years, and so I'm having trouble putting that into a percentage term. But my question is, if we use whatever those percentages represent for our district and put them with neighboring districts, do we have an awareness of the status of their fund balances and what they may have to do regarding their starting teacher salaries?
Mr. Hyatt may have additional information. At this time, I only know of one district that is planning on giving a raise, and that's Capel. And the reason is they did a tax ratification election that did pass last year, so at this time, they felt that they could.
They're going to be the exception.
They are the exception. I know of no other district. And I was in Austin yesterday with the Texas Education Agency, and there were about 30 districts represented, and no one was giving a raise at that meeting.
Yeah, very, very few districts will be able to provide raises this year. We have been in contact with one other district that's approaching the adjustment to new hire schedules as we are, and that's Richardson ISD. So, that's not an uncommon dilemma.
No, I'm certain of that. Where I'm going with this is that if we decrease our starting salaries, my speculation is, compared with some other districts may have to do, that our decrease won't be as much as other districts may have to decrease their starting salaries.
I think that's--
I'm reading these numbers, I'm reading these numbers to tell me, and I realize that that's speculation, but I'm reading them to tell me that our ship will not sink in the next two years.
That is what we're trying to illustrate. I appreciate you making that comment. While this is truly tragic for public education in the state of Texas, our boat is no less sunk than about another 1,100 other school districts in the state of Texas.
Ours is floating higher.
Ours is floating relatively high. And for sure, for one year, you are leading a financially sound and secure school district that is not going to have financial devastation. It will impact some staff, though. I mean, Ms. Halsey mentioned it somewhat in passing, but I'll reemphasize it. Just because we're not making huge cuts in our budgeting process does not mean that we don't spend literally hours every week combing our existing budget, looking for small and sometimes not-so-small cost reductions. Our budgets, you know, we're leaving our budget in place, but that doesn't mean we have to spend the money if we can help it. Candidly, you've had some people come to discuss with you some of the concerns about some of the cost reductions we've had, and you may have more, because, you know, we're looking hard at anything that has more than two zeros on it is apt to be under consideration for a cut if we can do it.
I guess a better way of me posing the question is, when you look at our fund balance and the number of days that it would run the district, how do we compare against the neighboring districts in terms of our fund balance with the number of days versus other districts and their fund balances?
About middle of the pack. Maybe, you've got to realize, we live in a relatively unique area, and there are several districts around us that are in a pretty good financial situation. You mentioned Capel because of their tax election. They're in pretty good shape. A few other districts in our area, probably, we're probably in the top third, maybe the top quarter, but there is probably a quarter of the districts in the North Texas, North Dallas area in particular, that are in similar circumstances as we.
Yeah, and if I could add, Ms. Shore, I think that an indication would be how aggressive some of the districts are already having to be for next year's cuts would indicate they don't have a fund balance for next year to deal with that. So, they're having to be more aggressive. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goode?
Ms. Halsey, if you would, clarify once again something that you said. If I understand, our beginning fund balance for 2012-2013, I think, was $62.4 million, and I believe you said, I forgot how many days, 120--
Let me put it--
No, let me--
Well, I had it.
Yeah.
I think for 1112, that depends if that third-party holds with the $10.7 million reduction in our fund balance estimate at this time would be $62.4 million, which would cover about 112 days.
Okay. And let's continue that, assuming we take the additional for 2012-2013, the $5.9 million additional reduction.
Oh, but you have to count that we're doing lots of reductions behind the scenes that will be presented in future time. So, you can't--
And, Bonnie, if I may add, it's an additional $5 million loss in revenues, which means in that individual 2013 year, our revenues would actually be $15 million less than they are this year.
Right.
So, that would be approximately a $15 million hit to fund balance.
It's $25 million. It's $25 million, then.
No.
10 in year one, 15 in year two.
No.
Exactly.
No. Remember, y'all, it's $16.5 overall, over the two years.
Two years.
You do not have the addition, it's not added to, it's the difference--
Well, and that's my point I was trying to make.
Yes, sir.
Because for 2012-2013, it's really only $5.9 million additional.
I think it was $6.5, right.
How many, how many days is $5 million?
That's basically what I'm trying to get to, the additional amount.
We estimate half a million plus per day.
So, 10 days.
So, 10 days.
Okay, so even, okay. The point is, the next biennium, we're still well above our 90-day threshold.
See, the total is $16.5 over the two-year period. So, we take the $10.7 in the first, and then we take an additional $5.9. All of that's reduced from 2011. I think that's what Mr. Goode was trying to point at.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a clarification.
Right.
When the biennium is complete, based upon those numbers, where are we?
Looks like we have 102 days left in the fund balance, give or take.
Which means, at that, we are still above what we have set as our minimum goal, correct?
You make a good point, Mr. Goode. Even for the biennium, we're not at risk of going bankrupt. But what we are at risk of is not becoming, not solving the problem. Over these next two years, our challenge, your challenge as a board, and our challenge is administration, is to acclimate to this reduced funding so that in two years, we're not bringing back to you that we're still going to go in the hole $5 or $10 million each year. We will have to acclimate to this slower revenue stream.
But my point, I think that I want to make sure we all understand. We understand what we have to do to reduce those amounts, but it's not this catastrophic event that some people have talked about.
Not for us.
Not for us.
It's a creeping catastrophe. And again, I don't want to overestimate, I don't want to overstate. Be calm and comforted that we're not, the district is not collapsing immediately, but that doesn't, I mean, I, again, don't want to overestimate, overstate it. But if, over the next 24 months, we don't deal with this issue, sometime in the next 24 months after that, we will have a catastrophe.
Well, Mr. Hyatt, would you say we at least have 24 months to deal with it, whereas some school districts do not have 24 months?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Goode, I think that's a great observation. I guess our, even though we've been optimistic about maybe getting a lower number, we know that they could meet, and that number could go up. And then they meet again in two years. So, we're going to have to deal with that after we get through this next two years, that they'll be meeting again, and who knows what the outlook for public school funding's going to be.
Okay.
We do know that Senator Shapiro has said this is the new norm. This is the new reality.
She said a lot of things, but--
She said that today.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Halsey.
You're welcome.
Item 2C, consider all matters related to-- Item 2D, report options related to publication of district vendor check registers.
Guess what? It's me again. At the May 5th meeting, there was some discussion about the possibility of the district posting a monthly vendor check register on the district webpage, and we have some additional information on that to report. School districts have a duty not to disclose certain confidential information, basically related to employee information if they elect privacy, student information, and information that could be intimate or embarrassing. District employees who release confidential information are subject to criminal penalties under the Texas Government Code Section 552.352, and violations of Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA, may result in a loss in federal funding. However, if we publish very limited information, the date, the check number, the vendor name, and the amount, the chance of confidentiality violations may be limited. Here's an example of what many districts publish. Again, it's just the date, the check number, the vendor name, and the amount. Management intends to post the limited information shown in this example. We will post on a trial basis for six months, at which time we will evaluate the process for effectiveness and efficiency. Any questions?
Any questions about this?
I got one question. This is to Mr. Hyatt. What are other districts doing?
Very similar to what Ms. Halsey said. There are a couple of, I say a couple, actually, Houston ISD is probably the only dramatic exception, and I guess the scope of their operations and the scope of their capabilities is a little bit different than ours, as you can well imagine. But most medium-sized districts, most districts of our nature, are posting something similar to this.
Yeah. What about the, a description or chart of accounts? We're going to kind of opt to kind of leave that off, I guess, is what I'm saying, because I don't see it on here.
Yeah, what makes that awkward to do electronically is that each check that's written may actually be distributed to multiple accounts. You know, we may write one check to whatever that first vendor is, but that may be from three, for three schools buying three things, you know. And so if you do that, you've got, you know, a check, a name, and then a list of accounts below it breaking it out. You know, we've done some extracts, so we can actually do that. And on a file management kind of basis, if you get an extract and you can manage it, you can do that. But just publishing a list, that becomes really, really awkward to manage.
So, putting it into subaccounts would be kind of pretty, I guess.
It would be awkward to manage and awkward to publish.
The risk of confidentiality violations increases with those codes as well, those descriptions.
Are we still talking about doing this as a staff and not our--
Yes, ma'am.
--through our attorneys?
And that's part of what Ms. Halsey's saying. At this, at this level of detail, we believe we can do this at a staff level and give you a reasonable degree of comfort that we won't have any confidentiality breach and accomplish this with not an extraordinary amount of additional staff effort. I mean, that's, you know, we're trying to reach a middle ground to where we get some additional information for the public to have access to without making it overly onerous to the staff to produce it and have any significant risk of confidential information being published.
Well, it's definitely a step in the field of transparency, so-- So, I commend the staff for taking this step.
Thanks.
So, you'll come back to us in six months and tell us how it's working?
Well, if I may, I would like to make a motion that we approve the publication of the district vendor check register for a six-month period.
It's not on the agenda as an action item.
It is on the--
It is an action item. And we appreciate, Mr. Goode, the support of the board to put it on a trial basis like that, and then we can bring back and give some information. So, if that's the board's pleasure, obviously.
I second the motion.
Well, can I, I'm not offended, but your motion is that the information that was projected, check number--
Yes.
--vendor, amount, and what's that fourth category?
Date.
Date. That that be published.
That's correct.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's unanimous. And I appreciate the administration for bringing forth this recommendation that doesn't eat up a lot of staff time, hopefully, and we'll look forward to your report back in six months.
Thank you.
Once we get this up and running, we'll probably shoot you guys a link to it so you can see the, kind of, the first efforts. It'll be on our website, you know, after that, but we'll give you a connection so you can see it first.
Thank you.
The next item is 2E, consider report on school starting times for the 2011-2012 school year. We have several people that wanted to address the board, and what I would ask is, we have three audience for guests on that subject. What I think would work is we'll have the report, and then we'll give you all an opportunity to make your comments, and we need to be limited to three minutes on that subject. Does that work for the people that signed up to speak, or would you rather speak before the report? So, at that time, in that case, Dr. Burns?
Ready to go? Thank you, Ms. Klein. We'll kind of, just kind of bring us up to date with the history of this a little bit. Last year, at this time in June, the board looked at several items that they felt like needed some more in-depth study. So, we had a work study identified to look at school start times, look at the research, look at the most current research regarding cognitive development in adolescents as well as younger children, and see what the findings were, and to see if that gave us information about us wanting to make a change in our current starting times. The administration, actually, at the time, was looking at a two-year study, but I think the evidence was pretty overwhelming in favor of looking at a different time for adolescents, that the board instructed us to kind of go forward and bring you back something to consider for next year. So, that's where we are tonight. We're going to bring you, based on our work with the work study, as well with our staff and our principals, into what they believe is the most appropriate times to take advantage of the biological clock in all of us at different ages that we have. So, Mr. Hyatt has prepared the information, and he'll give that to you. And then, as Ms. Klein said, then we'd love to have the audience some time to comment before action, before we request any action. So, Ms. Hyatt?
Thank you, Dr. Burns. I wish Dr. Mayor were here to-- I wish Dr. Mayor were here tonight, because she and I have been debating school start time for probably in range of eight to 10 years. I mean, ever since Dr. Mayor was at Creteview and my kids were at Creteview and we were both waking up sometimes way before sunrise to get our kids off to high school. And she, her, she and her staff were getting there sometime the night before, it seemed like, to get high school started. But from the logistical side of it, it was just really awkward. And we actually went through two previous efforts to study and come to recommendations on school starting time. Those of you who've been around for a long time may remember some of those previous efforts. And I think the greatest reason for our previous failures to come to a solution is we, we didn't really identify the root problem, if you will. We kept trying to fix it all at once and move everybody to one common start time. And when we tried to move everybody to a common start time, the cost was exorbitant, the logistics were unrealistic, and we would just get frustrated and give up and move on, because it worked okay the way it was. But more and more, Dr. Mayor and Dr. Burns kept giving me terms like cognitive and circadium and student achievement and, you know, all those good things that had to do with how well our kids can do in school. And us trying to find a solution that would not financially impact the district dramatically, that would not make it the logistically impossible to achieve, but still give our students a greater advantage to coming to school ready to learn. This time, last time, we started off with a work session with our district advisory council, I mean, district improvement council, I'm sorry. We, obviously, you were involved in a work session with the Board of Trustees. Our staff internally did some work and research. And what we came up with was not a totally doing away with our concept of splitting the times between schools, because frankly, our financial issues are even greater than they are, than they were when we first split it for financial reasons. So we really couldn't afford to collapse the time. But what we came up with, and let me preface this by saying, this is not a 100% everybody agrees with this solution. I will, one of the reasons we got frustrated in our previous efforts is because we couldn't find a solution that 98% or even 90% of people involved agreed with. But we did come up with a solution that is a reasonable majority of our, of our staff, board, and community felt like was an improvement on what we had. That solution was, it was more or less switching our middle and high school times to where our elementary schools are being proposed to start at 7:40. Currently, our high schools start at 7:30. We felt like we could give them at least 10 minutes later to start elementary school. It's just, it's a little bit, little bit later. And also the observation that elementary school students, while their sleep patterns are important too, and they have some issues related to being alert and awake for school. Unfortunately, in our current economic world, many parents are up and out of the house going to work, it's often downtown, to have to be at work at the 8 o'clock time period. So we're having a significant number of students dropped off at elementary school at 7:30 anyway. I mean, that's when mom and dad have to get out of Carrollton to get to work. And so, we have these young children that are, that are waiting for school to start. So, we believe that 7:40 would actually accommodate our elementary students as well, or perhaps even better than our current 8:10 start time. So, we really think that's a reasonably good elementary school start time. We're proposing to move the high school, then, to an 8:20 start time. That gives us enough time after the elementary school starts to get our buses recirculated, the same buses that drop off the elementary kids at 7:40, then you can go back and run a route and pick up the high school students, drop them off at 8:20. That almost hour later start for high schoolers, we believe, gives them a significant better approach to being ready for education, being ready for learning at high school. And then our middle schools essentially start, it's still their third and last time, again, give enough time between high school and middle and start them at 9 o'clock. So that would be the change in the sequence of our schools, still split by approximately the same length of time. We are proposing that we maintain our school length of day that we ran with this year. So that mean, elementary, we go from 7:40 to 2:55. High school from 8:20 to 3:35. And middle schools from 9 o'clock to 4:15. If there's any question, I'd be happy to respond to them.
Yeah, Mr. Hyatt, if I could add to that, you know, certainly there's no perfect schedule that meets everybody's schedules out there that they have, it's all different. But as Mr. Hyatt pointed out, we know there's some cognitive, it's research regarding adolescent development and at the high school age and their sleep patterns. We know that's true, we've got the research on it. And, you know, some adjustment there is shown to be beneficial to the academic development of kids to be a little later. As well as, Mr. Hyatt pointed out, sometimes, you know, we shouldn't do it for convenience, but sometimes convenience does make it attractive to folks. And I think the main thing is that, you know, we believe that high achievement is our most important thing, and that's why we exist as a school district. And so if we're not taking action to take advantage of research that tells us what's the best way to get that achievement, then I'm not sure we're being diligent. So, that's why we bring to you a change in that schedule that we haven't really changed over two decades. We've been at this with almost two decades now. As well as, what we believe is important is to have more time. More time on learning increases achievement, there's no doubt about it, the research is there. So, the additional time is also a part of our recommendation tonight, as well as the adjustments in the different start times.
And just, just one thing, just because I kind of feel a semi-obligation to say it. I have received a couple of phone calls from concerned parents. And the one element that is pointed out, and it does create for some families an issue is those families who have high schoolers that historically have gotten out earliest can come home and be home for younger children that get out later. So that creates a 40-minute gap, if you will, where younger kids, those elementary kids will get out for those families who only have their high school students available to come watch them in that afternoon period. In any configuration, there are going to be a component of families that have gaps in their, in their family circumstances. And I wish it weren't so, but that's just, there just always is in different circumstances.
What time does pre-K get a start?
Pre-K generally runs the elementary route, every elementary times, but it's with a little bit, a little bit later start generally, but it's essentially the same as elementary.
7:40?
It'd be 7:40.
7:40.
It hasn't felt this way the past few days, but it wasn't too long ago, it was a little bit chilly outside. And because it was so chilly, we made an adjustment in the school day. I heard Dr. Burns say the additional time. The school length that we're talking about for next year is the length of day that we went to as a result of having those days when it was awfully chilly.
You're correct, Ms. Shore. It's a continuation of those 15 instructional minutes. We believe it was positive from our teachers' standpoint of what they could do with the kids in the extra time, and so therefore, we recommend keeping it within the time.
And isn't it true that if we don't have that quantity of time added, that kids who go to Richardson ISD actually get two weeks more of instruction during the school year than our kids would be receiving?
Yes. And Ms. Shore, you're absolutely correct. In the work study, we, we highlighted several school districts that had a longer instructional day than us, several school districts that have a different start time than us. And obviously, we've compared achievement, and you're absolutely right. If you're in Richardson, you're getting more instructional time. I believe Louisville had more instructional time, several districts around us, HUB. So, it is a disadvantage for our kids not to have that time.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, so at this time, we're going to start with the audience for guests comments. If anyone else would like to address the board, please see Ms. Scrivner, she has, the forms are outside and just dropped them off to her. So if anyone else would like to talk. When I call your name, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We do ask that you limit your comments for three minutes. Ms. Good is going to be our official timer. Please let me know if we get any more audience for guests. The first one will be Steve Withers, and then the second one will be Rachel Grue. So let's start with Mr. Withers.
Thank you for your time. My name is Steve Withers. I reside at 2111 Tiburon Drive in Carrollton. And I came to speak in opposition to the proposed changes. We've had, we have four children. Two of them have graduated from Newman Smith, and one of them is a sophomore at Newman Smith. And my main, well, I have a couple of concerns about it. When high school kids are able to work and they're, if we're pushing out the school day an extra hour, it's going to make it that much more difficult for them to be employed. And also, too, the extracurricular activities. My daughter is in band, and band practice can run on into the afternoon, which will push it on into supper time. And, and I know there are studies that demonstrate that children who eat with their parents do, do better. That kind of quality time with family is important. And also, I'm afraid that, also, too, the amount of time for homework would be reduced in the afternoon. I don't think it's practical to think that children are going to wake up in the morning and do homework, it's just not the right time for it. And also, too, I think we're sort of catering to the student that sleeps, and I don't think that's a really good idea. I don't think we should be catering to them. Many of them are just going to stay up an extra 50 minutes to an hour, knowing that they don't have to go to school for, you know, an hour later. But there will be some of them, I'm sure, that this will benefit. But we talked about the studies that show the benefit. I would like to see how much of a benefit it actually is. Is it marginal, or is it a genuine benefit? So, anyway, I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Rachel Grue. And then after her, Chris Goodrich. And those are the only three people that I have signed up for this topic.
Oh, for this topic.
My name is Rachel Grue, and I live at 3730 Elizabeth Drive in Carrollton. And I was actually a junior this year at Creteview High School. And I'm also in opposition to the new start time that would be proposed for next year. I believe that there are several flaws that are put forward by this. Like, I understand that you have good intentions. I know that teenagers get the least sleep of any age group in our country, and we need it the most with our hectic and demanding schedules. However, I don't think that starting the school day later will solve this. The allure of a later start time only says to students that they can sleep later, and so they can, they will not get any more sleep than usual. My stepbrother actually goes to Hebron, who starts later, and he knows that he can sleep later than I can, and he actually doesn't even start his homework until 9 o'clock. And he's, because he stays up much later than I do and gets less sleep than I do, even though I get up earlier than him. No matter what time the school starts, teenagers are always going to try to run off as little sleep as possible. We have so many things that we want to do during the day, whether they be things we have to do, or things, just like watching TV until midnight. I know several people who just do that. And we, because since we're teenagers and students, we have to balance schoolwork and church and friends and family and jobs and extracurricular activities. And it's just, the hectic schedule is another reason that I don't think the new school schedule would work the way we want it to. Because many students at Creteview are involved, and other high schools in CFPISD are involved in several extracurricular activities. Like this gentleman mentioned, marching band practice, which I'm involved in, is from 3:30 to 6:00 on weekdays in the fall semester. And if we started the school day an hour later and ended it later, we probably wouldn't get home until 7:30 or 8:00. And it's hard enough, I know, for me to do my homework when I get home from band, so it would just make it even harder and make me get less sleep. And this year, like Mr. McDaniel mentioned earlier, is a very important year for the Creteview band, since we're going to Midwest. So that would just make it very stressful for us. And also during the musical and spring show and one-act play, I know that the theater kids and the cheval kids and the cheerleaders are sometimes up at the school until 10:30 or 11:00. So if the school day was pushed an hour later, they would be there until the wee hours in the morning, and I just don't think that's fair to those kids, to make them stay later because they're putting on a great show for us. And like this gentleman mentioned, another time sacrifice many high school students make is an after-school job. And a large portion of students at the high schools already have a set schedule and a set job they have already obtained, and changing the hours of the school day could put those hours that they already have in jeopardy. And for many students, their job and the money they make contributes to their family's income. And since these families already have a financial strain, cutting back their students' hours would give them an additional struggle. Also, if the elementary school times were pushed back earlier and the kids got back later... Is that my timer? Oh, okay. Well, I have a petition, too. 254 signatures.
Thank you, Ms. Grue. The next one is Chris Goodrich.
Tell her to give the petition.
You can give your petition to Mr. Hyatt.
Or Mr. Hyatt. Thank you.
My name is Chris Goodrich. I reside at 2404 Miranda Place in Denton, Texas. My son is a elementary school student at Carrollton Elementary, and my wife is a teacher over there as well. I'm, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Speaking in against this proposition, as I feel it would be a detriment to both my family, the community, the whole, and just everyone in general. I understand, I think, I've read on the internet, Ms. Your sleep study is coming from the National Sleep Foundation, I believe, is one of the studies out there. I've read this study before, and it seems to be a very one-sided study to where it only focuses on high school students and really ignores the younger students, especially elementary school students, who require just as much sleep as everyone else. Currently, my son goes to bed at 8 o'clock, 8:30 every night, in order to be able to get up in time to leave the house at 7 o'clock in the morning with my wife to get to school. That means if the push to start back time earlier, now he just has to get, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. He has to go to sleep probably about 7:30, maybe 8:00, at the latest, in order to get the proper amount of sleep to go to school and be active and be aware. I don't get home from until 6 o'clock. So that means I would probably have maybe two hours with my son every night, which would be horrible for me. And also, just pushing the start back time for an elementary school is just pushing the problem onto the elementary school kids. So where the high school kids are having the problem right now, elementary school's kids are now going to have the same problem high schoolers are having right now. Children are also going to be waiting for the buses in the dark. In October, the sun doesn't come up until 7:40. That means school's going to be starting at sunrise for these kids. And so they're going to be waiting out in the dark for the buses to come pick them up. And then, they're not, they're going to be getting out at 3 o'clock. And after the bell is a current program that goes on to 6:00. So that means the kids, a lot of parents don't pick them up till about 6:00. And now you've got to pay the teachers who are doing the after-the-bell another hour worth of work. And so there's a financial cost there, I don't know what's brought up. Also, the financial cost of changing all the signage for every single school, what would that be? And also, the fact that kids are getting out at 3:00 and they're unsupervised was brought up earlier. A lot of these parents can't afford after-the-bell, they can't afford after-school daycare. Now they're going to be home for, where it was only maybe an hour, now they're going to be home for, for two hours. Or if they don't have the older brothers to come pick them up, what is that going to happen to these kids that are already walking home or taking the bus home? I'm worried about that. And I think that's really about it. I just had to, I'm not very organized, it was kind of a last-minute thing, but I'm really concerned about the welfare of my child, having to be that early and just not getting any time with him when he comes home at night. Thank you.
We have one more audience for guests, it's Liz Withers.
Liz Withers, I'm Steve Withers's wife, so it's the same address, 2111 Tiburon. And as he mentioned, we're children. I just, I'm not going to reiterate what's been said before, but just trying to, focusing on one, my daughter that graduated last year. She was on the swim team for four years. The swim team starts at 6:00 in the morning during competitive season. And what we found, even just comparing the difference between the start time at 6:00 to where our other daughter who starts at 7:30 regular time, is basically, they, the, when you start earlier, they actually do go to bed earlier. And I think ideally, a study may say that, you know, they start, if they start later, they'll get more sleep. I think in reality, you will talk to any teenager and that's not, it just doesn't happen. They're, they're basically going to use whatever time they can to stay up, stay up late if they can. And one interesting thing with our daughter Joanna is, since she did start at 6:00 AM every day, when she... a.m. every day, when she went to, she goes to Dallas Baptist University, she took eight o'clock classes. And she would finish with her day by 12:30. So I think what it does, it sets in this, this habit of starting your day early and finishing it early. And, and I think that's good for the kids to be able to be out at 2:30 and be able to work. And another thing Joanna did is she was part of the TIP program and also in the internship program. And that enables them to actually do, spend some time, our son Nathan was also involved in the program with the city of Carrollton. And so if they can leave the school, because they, they get out their seventh period, if they can leave at like 1:30, then they have a pretty decent amount of time to spend in the, you know, eight to five business world, because there's still some hours left. And then too, I really think we can't minimize the fact, like he just mentioned about the younger kids, there are a lot of siblings that, that do watch their, their, the high school students that do watch their younger siblings. And I think that is a consideration. Just, you know, just really wanted to kind of put it perspective. I talked to my daughter that is a sophomore, I guess she will be a junior next year, and, and her friends, and they were really, really do think that they will not benefit by this because, just like they do on Friday or Saturday, stay up later, that's what they're going to end up doing if we, if we push down time. I really do not think the benefit of, theoretically it sounds good on paper of saying they're going to get more hours of sleep, I really don't think that's going to happen. And I think if you think about your own teenage life and, and your, and your children, if you have children, teenagers, you'll agree with that. But I do think that it does set a standard and a habit of them of starting their day early, getting it, getting things done, and then having their afternoons for them. And whether that's for a job or for extracurricular activities, theater, band, you know, sports, any kind of athletics that do meet in the afternoon. Thank you.
That's all the audience for guests that we have at this time. Are there any board comments or questions?
I think that, talking about the sleep study, I think that we probably, I mean, it seems like it's shifting one, I guess, one elementary or, or middle school, it's kind of shifting the burden, I guess, to start early to one of the other schools. What shall I say? Middle schools or, which one is starting? The first one is middle school?
Elementary.
Elementary, then middle school, then high school? And it's kind of shift-
Elementary, high, then middle.
Right. So it's kind of shifting the burden a little bit. But I guess the question is, is who's it get shift to? I guess the high school kids are benefiting in this instance because the school is starting a little bit later. I think a sleep study or any, any, any type of study is only as good as the people that are putting a study together. I would like to see more studies done on, done on this, which I'm sure if a person gets asleep later. But I'm of the opinion that if they, if they know that they have to start school at seven o'clock or 7:40, then they get to bed early and, you know, do their homework and, and they get on, they get on a set time, they get on a regiment. I know I've got six nieces and nephews and it's chop-chop. You've got to get on a regiment and, when you know it's time to go to bed and get up and, and get ready for school. And then for high school, I think it also sets the standard, you know? Either you get up and go to school, you know, it's the same thing by getting a job. You've got to get up in the morning and go to work. You know, we're, that's what high school kids is, I think it helps them get some training and mindset. And I do understand about older kids being home. I used to do the same thing, you know, get out and, you know, you got to, if you're the oldest, you got to kind of watch over the, the younger kids until mom or dad gets home. And that's something that we have to take into account. I don't know if we've really looked at that, at the situation like that, but I'm just kind of, you know, it's, in this situation, it's kind of really no win-win for anybody, whichever time, whichever school, I mean, whether it be elementary or high school or, you know, somebody's going to have to change. But I think leaving it the old way, I think is kind of, I think it benefits, I think it's, I think it's best suited for, best suited for the, for the high school. I think it's, I don't really think it's broken, but that's just my opinion. Any other thoughts, I guess?
This may be shocking. I want to perhaps suggest contrary view. Aren't we regretfully chasing Richardson in terms of academic performance?
Yes, sir. They're the number one.
Okay. And we're not?
Correct. We're number seventeen.
And, and isn't it true that if we change the start times as are being sponsored, that we would be aligning ourselves with Richardson's times that they start their schools?
Closer. They, they are nine o'clock start time at the high school. We're, we'd be at 8:20, so they're even later than this. They're at nine o'clock. Yeah, but-
They're performing at a higher academic level.
Right. But they're later. They're the later-
Okay, okay. And, and there were two presentations earlier today that talked about the district goal. What is our goal? And, and I realize that there is no perfect solution. But what is our goal? Is our goal to warehouse kids at times that they can be cared for by other kids during the day? Or is our goal high achievement for all students? And, and we know the answer to that question. And, and because there's no ideal solution, then I think the solution we ought to opt for is the one that allows for the highest academic achievement.
So you're saying that we're going to get, you're saying that we're going to get high academic achievement among high schools, once we, among the high schools, once we've changed to this new time, is what you're saying?
I'm certainly not saying that. I am saying that the district that's getting the highest achievement starts the latest, the high schools.
Well, I think we ought to stay within ourselves and stop looking at, I mean, I understand we have to kind of gauge ourselves, but I noticed earlier we're kind of comparing ourselves to COPL. And COPL has a total different set of demographics. You know? But in a sense too, so you're saying that the later start date for the high schools will give them a better achievement over-
They're scoring higher. I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying that it's definite, but they're scoring higher and they're starting later.
Is, is the difference between, is the difference caused by the start time or is the difference caused potentially by the length of the school day? And by extending the school day by 15 minutes, what does that do to us relative to, let's say, a higher-performing school like Richardson? How long is their school day?
Currently, the high school is, I believe, 15 minutes longer or 10 minutes longer. I can't remember how-
Even than what we're proposing now?
No. We would be in line with them with what we're proposing, yeah. Currently, they're, in our old schedule, they were longer. We are no more in line with that time.
Under our current schedule, after we've extended-
With the 15 minutes, exactly.
Well, if we're going to get a higher academic achievement, then I'll say let's change it. But, I mean, I don't, I, I think it counts-
And that's what I would hope.
And that's why we would bring it to you. I mean, this is something that, you know, again, we're sensitive, everybody's thoughts, and we understand that. And there is no perfect solution. But I know that you know that there's just as many people coming and saying this is a better time for them, for whatever their circumstance may be. The bottom line for us, from our academic side, was that what's the best structure for, for achievement? For cognitive development, biologically, when kids function the best? Mr. Hy, Mr. Dr. Hastings is here. He did a lot of that research for us. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of putting him on the spot, but he always has an opinion, so I know I could ask him for one. But he is, he is our research department. Not a very big one, but him and one other, and so they've done a lot of that research. And he can speak to it, as well as he's done the research over time. So, Dr. Hastings, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Could I quickly make a comment? As, as a former elementary teacher, having had little ones for 32 years in kindergarten, I know that I beg for more time in the morning because by the time they came back from lunch, when they have the glass, they eye look, you know that you're not going to get too much of the academic, academics into any kindergartner, first grader, second grader after lunch. Most of the afternoon is time where you have to find other ways to work with them. And so I know as, that it's very true, that we had many of our children waiting to get into school at 7:30 in the morning. And we, I also know that even though we, the schools now don't officially start till 8:10, that many teachers had their full classes by 10 minutes to eight and started immediately at 10 minutes to eight because they needed more time to spend on task with these children. So there, I just know that, that little ones are ready, come in and they're ready to learn at 7:30, 8:00, and then by noon, they've just, they're, they're pretty well in capacity as far as what you can work with them.
Dr. Hastings?
Despite Dr. Byrne's statement about my opinions, I will try to keep my opinions out of this and refresh the board on some of the items we went over in our work study. It's not just a chasing of Richardson. If you recall, we had some information about this being a worldwide phenomena and that there were at least 12 to 15 countries that were cited that did research that concluded that later start times for adolescents proved to give them greater academic gain. And this was followed also by the research that we shared from, from Duke and from several of the other Ivy League colleges on the East Coast and in California that have gone to later start times because the research from the psychology departments and from the sleep studies are, is overwhelming, that there is a correlation between later start times and academic performance. The question was also shared during that work study about the fact that some students might not get any more sleep if you had a later start time. They would just go to bed at a later time. That was not the conclusion of the meta-analysis of all the researches that we went through. It wasn't just one or two studies. We looked at dozens of studies that concluded that yes, there are some students who will go to bed later, but the trade-off will be more kids do go to bed at, at a same time or a little bit earlier, they do get more total sleep. If this was an isolation issue, if it was just a CFB trying to chase Richardson, we might have a weak argument. But when you have a worldwide phenomena and you have some of our strongest universities in the, in the country moving in this direction, the, the last piece of information that was shared at that work study was also dealing with the issue of elementary students. Is this, is this a detriment to them? And there is no research that indicates that there is any detriment to the, changing of their start times. There are logistical issues for families to work through. But if you want to go strictly from what the studies have said, from international to national studies, you will conclude that it is a benefit academically for our adolescents.
Ms. Webb, do you have any record, any thoughts from a high school perspective?
I know that as a high school teacher, first period and often second period were kind of a quiet time, to the least. There was a lot of-
It's very diplomatic of you.
Yes, it was very sleepy in, in class. And as a high school teacher, I would have wanted to start at a later time when my kids were more awake. And it doesn't matter how many extra activities they have, all of them were very tired and sleepy in the morning.
To, to me, this is a no-brainer. I'm sensitive to every family that has to make adjustments with their kids. But we're about academics. And if that's what we're about, we are cheating our students. We're cheating our community if we intentionally fail to do something that is documented to improve the academic performance. You guys know where I'm leaning on this, but I think it's a no-brainer.
Any other comments or questions?
This is just an observation. I was involved in the discussion many years ago when we changed-
Two decades ago.
-to the schedule we're currently on. And I still remember the excessive criticism that came in that discussion because one was we were forcing high school kids to go to school earlier. Even then, when we talked about this, we, we commented 20 years ago that we were forcing high school students go, to begin their day too early. There were many other points of discussion, I won't go into those, but I do remember that one as a point of discussion. And I would venture to say, what I'm thrilled about, I think it's, the discussion is more tame this time than it was when we went through this last time. Because it was a very heated argument. And it was very bitterly opposed. So we're, we're going back to something that was working 20 years ago that we decided to change. Now we see ourselves going back. And what we've heard, especially from at least two educators here on the board, from elementary and high school, that what they, they see a little bit later for high school, a little bit earlier for elementary, would be their preference. So that's what we're trying to also address. I think we're trying to address what is, would be palatable to our educators also.
I'll also say, as a parent of a kindergartner, it will only be 10 minutes technically earlier than what they're asked to be at school at now. Because, you know, they're not tardy till 8:10, but we are strongly advised to have our students there by 7:50.
Any more comments?
If, if there's some members of the audience who want to speak to this, I think we should allow them to speak to that. If it's confined to three minutes, if they want to speak to it.
Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Holly Goodrich. I reside at 2404 Miranda Place in Denton, Texas. And I am an elementary school teacher at Carrollton Elementary. There are several teachers at our school that are having an issue with this. Right now, as it is, my students aren't even getting to school until 8:10. That's fifth grade. Now, the younger kids, yes, I agree, they are there at 7:30 in the morning. They're eating breakfast at 7:30 in the morning, when their parents drop them off. Now, if we push back our start time to 7:20 in the morning, they're going to be at school at seven o'clock in the morning eating breakfast. There's going to be no more breakfast time for them because we are asked to start teaching when we pick them up. So that would be 7:20. We'd have to pick them up at 7:20 and we were asked to start teaching at 7:20. So that would have to put my start time, seven o'clock, so I can be prepared for my students when they arrive in the door. Which I don't think is very fair for those kids who are getting to school at 7:30, they're not eating breakfast. They get here at 7:30, they need to eat their breakfast, they need to be there, they need to have a good, a good breakfast, a good solid morning. If they're getting there at seven o'clock in the morning, a lot of them aren't getting that. After school, a lot of them go home to brothers and sisters. And the ones that don't, they're sitting at home by themselves. And they're in trouble. I'm telling you, we have gangs over there. And they're in trouble. That trouble is just going to increase. More time spent alone without siblings, older people, it's going to increase. That's not going to help their academic ability. If they're not having a stable home environment, their academic ability is going to go down. So if they have somebody at home to guide them, I think that that's going to help more than simply moving back to start times. Also, I have sisters that work in Carrollton, or not Carrollton, in, like Dallas ISD and also in Louisville ISD. Their start times for elementary schools are eight o'clock. And then 8:30 for middle school and nine o'clock for high school. Why can't we just push back the start time to eight o'clock? I mean, I know they were talking about moving it back to 7:50 for next year, but that's, you know, that's 7:50. There's kids, kids have to be there at 7:50. That's when they start. Not seven, you know, 7:40. And they're adding time. So I mean, I just, just thinking about it, I just don't know that moving the, the elementary's kids that far back is really going to help them. And the high school kids, they need their jobs. I know when I was in high school, I got out and I had a job and then, you know, I made money and I prepared myself for college. As an adult, that helped me. You know, if I sleep late, that's my fault. You know, we need to prepare them for the future. You can't tell your boss, say, "Look, I stayed up till one o'clock in the morning, sorry, not going to be there till nine." You know? It's not the real world. The real world is now- The real world is now, I go to bed on time, I get up and go to my job. You know, the, the high school schoolers need to start learning that now, otherwise they're going to be in a real shock in about three years.
Chris Goodridge, 2404 Miranda Place, Denton, Texas.
Again, I just had one more thing to add, it's just really, again, we're just pushing the problem back earlier. And, and from what the sleep studies say, essentially, there's no school that should start before 8:00 is really what the sleep studies should say. While I understand and support your decision to give the kids more time and ability to succeed, why make the elementary school kids have the same problem? Move all the start time back. Start elementary school at 10:00, start middle school up after that and start high school even later. If that's your real goal is to give them a chance to succeed by giving them more time to sleep, give all the students the same opportunity. And as for the 7:30 start time, yes, they're dropped off at 7:30, those are the parents that have to be there at 8:00. Now those parents, in order to get through the traffic that you're going to have to start off, dropping at 7:30, they're going to be dropping it off at 7:00 because I've had them drop myself a couple of times when my wife's been sick. And I've dropped them off at 7:45 and the traffic is atrocious for people trying to get in there right before that bell. So, that's all I had. Thank you again.
I have one more question, and Dr. Hastings, I don't remember exactly what it said, but was there some kind of statistics about something between 2:00 and 4:00 PM during the day? Do you remember what I'm talking about? That we talked about in our work study about? Does anybody remember what I'm talking about?
Not yet.
No, about, oh, okay. I can't think of-
I'm sorry, I don't recall.
I can't think of what it was, I just remember those numbers in the, the work study. No? Okay.
Give me the context again on-
Was something about high school kids and what they do between 2:00 to 4:00 PM? I see somebody nodding that yes, there was some recollection, but I cannot remember what the, what it said either way. No? Okay.
So that's when they get the most trouble and that's when they're unsupervised.
Is that when they, okay, was that what it was?
It was that article that talked about the student who went from time to time during the school day.
Okay.
Right, that's right.
That, yeah, I was remembering that time, it was sticking out from the work study and I couldn't remember what it was. Okay.
Ms. Klein, I would like to move that the board approve the administration's recommendation regarding school start times and the length of the school day.
Mr. Shore?
Second and motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. It's now time for us to move on to item three, and we have one more audience for guests. I would ask, would the board prefer to take a break or keep going?
Let's take, it's 10:21, let's keep going.
We'll keep going. Audience for guests, we have one more speaker, and if you would come forward, Mr. Edward You're actually speaking to one of the consent agenda items, would you like to speak now? Is that fine for you?
Yes, it's regarding item number seven. Good evening, everyone. I know it's been a long night. Dr. Burns, Madam President, my name is Edward Lopez. I'm a senior partner in the law firm of Leinbarger, Goguen, Blair and Sampson from Dallas. This evening, on your consent agenda, item number seven is the consideration of a delinquent tax contract. The school district for many, many years has been represented in those legal matters by the Luna Law Firm, and for that whole period of time, I have always wanted to represent this district. As a, probably more out of professional courtesy and because I know members of Mr. Luna's firm, I've limited my efforts to, to market my services to the district. However, most of you were at a breakfast a few months ago before the Metro Crest Chamber of Commerce, and I made a comment to most of you that morning that it would, it would be my privilege to represent this district in the delinquent tax collections. The reason that I want to represent this district is, is at least twofold. One, my heart and soul is, is directed towards school districts and educators because I'm a product of this system. I grew up in a household where my parents were not able to read or write, and because of the public school system, I was able to attend college, go to graduate school, graduate from SMU Law School, and so school districts have always been very near and dear to me. And I chose to help those school districts in a different way, rather than become a teacher, rather than become a board member. My help is to provide my legal services, and I've been doing so for over 17 years as a tax attorney and for over 20 years in Dallas representing, before I got into tax, I represented Fortune 500 companies in corporate matters as well. The law firm that I'm associated with and I'm a partner with, and I'm an equity partner, meaning that I own a part of that law firm, we are the largest law firm in the country doing this kind of work. We collect over a billion dollars a year for over 2,500 cities, counties, school districts throughout the United States. We're the only law firm in the United States that collects money for the US government. We represent the US Treasury. We've represented the Internal Revenue Service in the past. And the services and the products that we offer, the very largest of our clients, as well as some of the smallest like Cockrell Hill, are the services that we want to offer you. Now, what makes it unique for me is the opportunity to represent you because I represent all five cities that Carrollton Farmers Branch goes into. I represent Dallas, I represent Capel, I represent Carrollton, I represent Irving, and I represent Farmers Branch. All of those cities are my clients. And in the 17 years that I've represented those clients, I've never lost a client. Is that my three minutes? What I'm requesting respectfully this evening is that the board consider pulling the matter from the consent agenda to allow the staff to actually conduct an office tour, an individual office interview. We were never interviewed in person for this opportunity. And to give them a little more time, there's really not, time is not really of the essence. There's a July 1 turnover of the tax rule.
Mr. Lopez, I think we were going to possibly pull that item anyway.
Okay. And that's my request this evening. Give this, give your staff a little more time. We will represent you July the 5th, August the 13th, September the 13th, and I think if they have more time, they can make a more intelligent, well, I shouldn't say intelligent, a more informed decision. So thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening, and I certainly would welcome the opportunity to represent this school district.
At this time, we'd like to move to 3B consent agenda. 3B1, consider approval of TEA application for expedited and general state waivers for pregnancy-related services on campus, CEHI. Item 2B2, consider financial report for April 2011. 2B3, consider all matters related to wealth equalization, including executing an agreement to purchase attendance credits. 3B4, consider appointment of tax assessor to calculate rollback tax rate and publish notice of public meeting to discuss 2011, '12 budget and proposed tax rate. 2B5, consider time, place and location of a public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate for the 2011, 2012 budget year. 2B6, consider approval of Farmers Branch Tax Increment Financing Zone Number 2 Project Plan Amendment. 2B7, consider all matters related to the selection of delinquent tax attorney. 2B8, consider RFP Number 1104271-3, Student Athletic and Voluntary Insurance. 2B9, consider RFP 1105041-2 for student nutrition groceries. 2B10, consider RFP Number 1105051-2 for student nutrition milk. 2B11, consider RFP Number 1105171-0 for student nutrition reimbursable meal vending machines. 2B12, consider RFP Number 1105052-2 for ID card systems and supplies. 2B13, consider RFP Number 1105102-2 for plumbing services. 2B14, consider approval of purchase of Microsoft licensing agreement. 2B15, consider approval of purchase of Tango reading assessment software. 2B16, consider approval of purchase of CME Algebra I curriculum. 2B17, consider approval of purchase of iPads for reading assessment. 2B18, oh, actually, it should all be 3B. 3B18, consider acceptance of purchasing report for the period May 5th through June 2nd. 3B19, consider exercising the extension option of RFP Number 1004081-1 for classroom instructional technology. 3B20, consider RFP Number 1104112 for depository services. 3B21, consider RFP 1105031-2 for campus apparel and promotions. 3B22, consider approval of purchase of recording and analysis assessment management software. 3B23, consider approval of minutes of Board of Trustees work, work study session meeting held April 22nd, 2011. 3B24, consider approval of minutes of Board of Trustees work study meeting held May 5th, 2011. 3B25, consider approval of minutes of the Board of Trustees regular meeting held May 5th, 2011. 3B26, consider approval of minutes of Board of Trustees special meeting held May 25th, 2011. Board, are there any items that you'd like to pull? Mr. Shore?
I'd like to pull 3B7 and 3B23, 24, 25 and 26.
Are there any other items that the board would like to pull? If there are not?
Ms. Klein, I recommend that we approve the consent agenda as amended by pulling items 7, 23, 24, 25 and 26.
Ms. Watt, thank you. Second and all in favor? All opposed? Mr. Shore, on one of your items?
Well, let me go to 3B23, 24, 25 and 26 first, if I may. The reason that I asked for those to be polled was because I was not present for any of those meetings and therefore feel it be inappropriate for me to vote on those minutes. And so I want to allow someone to move on approving that, but I'm going to need to abstain from voting on those items.
Ms. Klein, I recommend that we approve item 3B23, 24, 25 and 26.
And we haven't amended it.
As, as adjusted and correct, as corrected.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve 23, 24, 25 and 26 as corrected.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor? All those opposed?
I'll let you know that I'm abstaining from-
Mr. Shore is abstaining. Number seven?
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Do you regret me nominating you for president, having read all that?
I'll be looking forward to my check.
Okay, well, you'll be looking forward for a long time. With respect to the selection of delinquent tax attorney, I happen to practice law and we refer to these sorts of matters in the legal profession as beauty contests. And if you think of the Miss America or Miss Universe pageant, they're all beautiful. The contestants are all beautiful. And I would suggest that of the firms that were considered, there's nothing about any of them that isn't good or above. Any of the four would do an outstanding job. The staff was kind enough to furnish us with a, I'm going to call it a matrix of what they used to, for lack of a better term, rank the, the participants in the beauty contest. And-
For the overhead projector.
We, do you have an extra copy that you could put on the overhead, Donnie?
Here's one right here if you want to use this one. Do you have a copy? You got a copy of that?
I think I left mine in the other room.
Okay, so I don't know if you can read, but-
Can zoom a little bit.
The left-hand column, the evaluation factors. And then each firm is given a score based upon some evaluation for how they scored on those factors. And as I said earlier, I sit in this position as having practiced law for 33 years.
Can you make that a little bigger? Excuse me. Sorry to interrupt.
Zoom, there you go.
I would suggest that, two, four, six of these factors are irrelevant. Okay? I'd suggest that the core business in delinquent tax is irrelevant. Reference results, irrelevant. Size, irrelevant. History, irrelevant. Attends conferences, irrelevant, and access to other resources, irrelevant. I'd suggest that the bottom factor, the delinquent taxes outstanding, is the most important factor. And by the way, when you look at this matrix, the higher the score, the better somebody is scoring in that category. So for instance, if you got a 15 in something, you, you got the highest score possible. If you subtract the factors that, that I advocate are irrelevant, then from game a call, we would subtract 75 points, they're down to 49. From Mr. Lopez's firm, we'd subtract 64 points, they're down to 48. From Purdue Brandon, you'd subtract 70 points, they're down to 64. From Mr. Luna's firm, you subtract 49 and they're at 63. So there's a one-point difference between the Purdue firm and Mr. Luna's firm. But that one-point difference is using the numbers on that matrix, and it's weighting delinquent taxes outstanding, which I would argue is the most important factor, it's weighting at the least. Everything else has been multiplied by three to get to the number. So if you used that same weighting, then the Luna firm picks up 10 more points, the Purdue firm picks up eight more points, and actually, that puts the Luna firm with the highest score. And so I think that those are things that need to be considered. All these other factors, the factors that I'm saying are irrelevant, I'm saying they're irrelevant because this is one where really, what's the bottom line? And the bottom line is that they do the best on delinquent taxes being collected. And, and let me, let me emphasize something. Let me emphasize two things. It is my belief that, that we don't have something that's broken here. Okay? That's my belief, that's my understanding. And number two, none of these firms won't provide us good quality service. Number three, I'm sorry, but it just, you know, they, they can't offer us a break on the fees because we don't pay their fees. They get it from the delinquent taxpayer. So none of them can come to us and say, "If you hire me, I'll charge you 27 cents an hour instead of 30 cents an hour." I said my piece.
I'm going to have to disagree with you on the, which one I think you referenced was attend conferences for CPE hours. I would think that'd be very important. And as a, as a tax person myself, you know, you got to go and see what's the latest, what's the greatest. You have to be in the loop for new technology and as well for any, any law changes. But that's irrelevant in this situation.
You're not, you're not wrong when you say you have to stay abreast of things.
Yeah, I know.
But there's multiple ways of staying abreast and, and, and being in the profession, it's the lawyers who don't exercise diligence in keeping themselves abreast who go to the conferences so they can have it spoon-fed to them.
Whoa. That's a great way to put it. That's a great way to put it, Frank.
That is the way it is.
We are a lovely bunch. Congratulations, Ms. Klein.
Do you have any other comments? We're going to have a work session on the agenda. I know why.
You've been polite.
Any other comments?
Well, I think all four of them are good choices. I mean, I think what it boils down to is what our staff, I mean, who, to me, I think is, you know, how's it going with the Luna and Associates as it is now? And do they foresee any, anything new? I mean, are you guys satisfied?
If you're asking for a staff comment, and I'd obviously defer to Dr. Burns for the ultimate comment, but from the operations side, the day-to-day, the operations side, Mr. Shore makes a very good point. It is to some degree a beauty contest. It is to some degree who can present the best face. Candidly, the Purdue Brandon proposal was a slicker, a better put-together proposal. But if you're asking on a day-to-day operation, is Mr. Luna's firm in any way deficient? It is not. I mean, we've been very pleased with services. The results of their services speak for themselves, that in multiple ways, when looking at the results of our delinquent outstanding taxes, they are comparable or better than the market. So, there's absolutely no hesitation with the staff maintaining with the current firm. In fact, there's a small degree of transition confusion that would be avoided by remaining with the existing firm. We believe we owed it to you as a board to come up with a kind of a straight-up approach to relooking with a fresh eyes at alternatives and options for this service. We've done that. We've presented to you, based on that straight-up alternative look, what the results were. But I could not agree more with Mr. Shore. Any four of these firms would provide quality service for you.
And I would add to Mr. Hyatt's comments. The reason for us bringing this forward is certainly that we, not that we've been dissatisfied with Mr. Luna's firm, because we've been completely satisfied in all aspects. We brought it forward because after four years, I believe, Mr. Hyatt, we felt it was the diligence of the administration as well as the board to have some debate and talk about it and consider it. But it certainly wasn't because we felt like there was any lack of quality services that we were providing, and in fact, they've been outstanding. So, but it does, you know, warrant some discussion sometimes, and so, we felt like that was the appropriate thing to bring to...
I think it was a great presentation by Leinbarger and Associates.
Dr. Burns, could I maybe just comment on that point? I've worked with both.
Well, could you go to the podium?
That'd be Ms. Klein's prerogative, not she's the president.
I think everybody should have attempts.
Well, I don't know. Let me, I was just going to ask a, can you sit down? I was going to ask an administrative question. At the last board meeting, we extended the contract that we had because it was going to expire, is what I recall, or what was it?
Yes, ma'am. That was just a one-month extension because the actual, the ending date of the contract was last month. To make sure that we actually had an active contract, probably in an overabundance of caution, we asked you to execute an authorization for us to continue relationships with the Luna firm for one month till we finished up this proposal process. I don't believe there's any issue with the Luna firm extending any length of time. There really was no risk of us not having a contract, it's just to make sure the dates matched up with your renewing.
Mr. Lopez, you can speak, but please don't speak to them, speak to us. And please limit your comments to just what is appropriate.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I just want to, in all candidness, tell you that I've had the opportunity to work with both law firms. The primary reason I haven't come in to try to take this business, if you will, is because I think Dan Bearden and Mr. Luna's office has done a great job for you guys for the longest time. And if I didn't, if I'd have seen an opportunity for us to come in and really knock you over, then I would have done so a lot earlier. I think they do a fine job for you. And I'm not going to sit here as I didn't say earlier that they weren't doing a good job for you, because they do. That's my professional, honest opinion, even if it means us not getting the opportunity to represent you. They do a great job for you.
Thank you for your candor.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Sounds like a hard beauty contest.
They're all good-looking.
Mr. Shore?
I'll prepare to make a motion unless we have more discussion. I move...
I know.
You do? I move that we continue with our current delinquent tax attorney with the Luna firm, and that we extend, we either enter into a contract with them, or we extend it for three years.
A second. Ms. Watten, all those in favor? All those opposed? Is there one extension?
I think the next time we do this, I would like all four, all firms that are in contention, I would like for them to come up and do a presentation before the board. About, you know, what Leinbarger and Associates, by sending Mr. Lopez here, I mean, that was, I enjoyed the presentation.
Thank you. I think that this time, we're done with our consent agenda, and we're moving on to 3B. 3B is consider all matters related to purchase of real property, 13 acres, including the Farmers Branch Tax Increment Financing Zone Number One, including hostile termination of earnestment contracts.
Ms. Hyatt, will you address that?
Yeah, Ms. Klein, if you would please the board, I'd like to suggest we defer this till after a brief conversation in a closed session. I don't think it'll take real long, but I think it would be appropriate for some conversation in private. And we have our attorney here to consult with us also.
So, we'll defer that to closed session, well, after closed session, and we'll move on to 3B, review of the district's panel of attorneys, including additions or alterations from the panel.
Ms. Klein, if I can say a few words, and then Mr. Hyatt may want to add some things. But if you remember, last year, the board asked us to look at a panel of attorneys for the district's options. The district did that. We were very pleased with having those choices in the panel. I believe we've been served well by all on the panel in all different capacities. There was one firm that wasn't on the panel originally, who still continues to serve the district in finishing up some, at that time, pending lawsuits, and they've wrapped those up, and we've been very impressed with their work. So, the district tonight is bringing you an addition. We're not requesting that you delete any. We like the panel that we have, and we continue to use. We're just requesting that we add another law firm to the panel as an option for us, and that's the law firm of Hensley and Schwartz. So, Mr. Hyatt, do you have anything to add?
Only minor comment. If you recall, there were actually some outstanding items in progress, in process when we selected the last, in the last panel, and I believe the board felt it was prudent to not add the firm that had some issues associated with it. All those issues, I believe, have been resolved, and resolved favorably, and through the process of reviewing and interviewing the firms, this firm was identified as a quality firm, and has provided quality service for us.
Mr. Shore?
I move that we add Hensley Schwartz to the stable of law firms that we can call upon.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? May we not need a stable of law firms?
Please.
3E, consider all matters regarding annual board member continuing education calendar.
I had asked for that item to be put on the agenda, Ms. Klein, thank you. And it does not need to be an action item, and I'll be very short because it is late. One of the things that I wanted to point out, particularly for the community, is the amount of education that board members are expected to participate in, in order to prepare them and keep them fresh and current, in order to do board service, this highly-paid job that we do. It may be highly-paid, but it is absolutely very critical to the ongoing community and to our economy, especially for the future. Board members are preparing to attend Summer Leadership Institute, sponsored by Tasby, over the course of the next two weeks, and they will be spending some time, quality time, with other board members in board training. And all of our board members have worked at getting through the basic training, which is Tasby ISD, which is really a base preparation for all board members when they first come on the board. We have other opportunities for education in our annual convention, at areas, the North Texas Area Association of School Boards meetings, as well as the Texas Institute for School Boards, and Leadership Tasby. One of the things I would like to encourage my fellow board members to do is consider participation in Leadership Tasby. At this point in time on the board, there are only two of us, which are master trustees out of Leadership Tasby, and I think it's a worthwhile program, as I believe Mr. Goode would agree. So, it is something that we take very seriously, and we appreciate the support of the community as we do this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Item, are we ready to move to item 3F?
Yep.
Item 3F, consider permission of new advocacy resolution to CP.
Yeah. Ms. Klein, I'll just say a few words about it. Every year at this time, Tasby, or every other year, is they prepare for, not the current legislative session, but the one after, asking boards to adopt any kind of resolution for advocacy by Tasby. Several board members have been involved in that in the past. In fact, Ms. Chaffin has helped us do the one last year. We're just bringing this forward to you for dialogue among yourself and what you might want to consider. They've asked us to have a July one, I believe, deadline to submit, so if you're not ready tonight, we would need to have it ready by, and having it as an agenda item in our work study to complete, but we at least needed to get it to your table for discussion, so...
Mr. Goode?
I'm not prepared to add to this yet. I think there's a great opportunity coming up over the next couple of weeks, as we dialogue with our fellow board members throughout the state of Texas, to be able to coalesce ideas together into some formal statements that we could then probably present at our work-study session in June.
About, I agree. Any action of the board?
Yep.
And I don't believe that requires any action, we just put it on the work-study for action at that time, so...
Item 4A, comments from board members regarding posted agenda items. Are there any other comments that you wish to make at this time?
No.
Hearing none, seeing none, we will take a brief recess and reconvene. It's currently 10:50, we'll reconvene at 11:00 PM for agenda item number five, which is closed session. Do I need to read?
Yes.
Going into closed session form. Closed meetings authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, real property, 551.074, personnel matters, 551.076, security devices, 551.082, schools, children, district employees, disciplinary matter or complaint, 551.0821, personally identifiable student information, 551.084, investigation, 5A, consider all matters related to value and purchase of real property, 13 acres in the Farmers Branch Tax Increment Financing Zone Number One, Texas Government Code, 551.072, real property. And then, I think it says I'm, break the gavel.
Yep.
You know, I'm not...